All right, we're gonna get started here, folks. The Monday, July 10th, 2023 meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 P. M. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanley.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Otteway.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Mayor.
Here.
All right, Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion on the agenda? Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that? Commissioner Otteway.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I have no announcements for this evening. Moving on to our boards and committees, we have one appointment this evening. Do I have a motion on the appointment? Commissioner Hanley.
I move that we appoint John Stewart to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for an unexpired term ending 1/29/24.
Do we have a second on that? Commissioner Stonehouse.
Second, Your Honor.
Any comment or discussion?
Just the same thing that I always say, thank you very much for giving us your time, and I love seeing people working on our boards and committees.
Anything further, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only that a fine person and I think it will be a stellar addition to the board.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, that brings us to our first public comment session of the evening. As a reminder, the public public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address before giving your comment, and feel free to just approach the center podium. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. Like to use my first half of public comment to talk about the off-leash dog training sessions that will be offered tomorrow at Northern Michigan University at 1:30 and 3:30. I sent an invitation to everyone on the commission to join us just for example of what UPOS training can do and what how it can affect the community, just like I invited all the county commissioners to join us as well. We're having a noticeable commitment of staff from the county coming tomorrow. They, in their jobs, encounter off-leash dogs. So I wanted to encourage all the people who work for our city manager to consider whether they wanted to come tomorrow at 1:30 or at 3:30. We have spots available in both. The training is free, and it is being offered, the more feedback we get, which has been enormously positive, the more chances are we'll offer it again. But we would encourage you to ask your staff people to attend because I learned an awful lot about dogs, and I thought I knew an awful lot about dogs. Plus, every attendee will get a, what I call, a dog pillowcase, which has a towel, some pooper bags, some gloves, a water dish, and some snacks, and two slip-on leashes, which can be used to corral an off-leash dog. And that is coming at no charge to attendees. But the point is, you gotta attend. I can't just hand them out to people on the street. So please come and encourage. Police officers are coming, and we've got two of the Park Patrol people coming as well, which is very good. And I appreciate the commitment of the police department to doing that. My second reality is this. They say at national politic level that social security is the third rail of national politics, which is you cannot touch it without getting electrocuted because there's so many people with a vested interest in it. For those of you who weren't born or raised here, anything that you do to Presque Isle, which is known as the island, is the third rail of local politics, which is to say you cannot change anything about Presque Isle without encountering commitment, opposition, comments, concerns. And I'll have more to say in my second three-minute segment, but my understanding is that the island will be shut to traffic Monday and Wednesday night from 6:00 to close because of staffing issues, and we all know we're in a tax crunch. I wasn't in the room when that decision was made, but another decision that could have been made to deal with those staffing issues is to leave the island open to vehicle traffic from 6:00 to 11:00 P. M. And then you wouldn't have anybody having to go out and put up barricades. But there was no one in the room to have that opinion. So I'll be back at the end of the mission to finish what I'm saying. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. That brings us to our presentation for the evening, which is our Police and Fire Pension Board by Chair Mike Archkowski.
Good evening and thanks for having me. My name is Mike Archikowski. I'm a detective sergeant with the Marquette City Police Department. I'm giving the annual presentation on the Police and Fire Pension Fund. This was a retirement system set up for city Marquette police and firefighters with Act 345. It was a Michigan law of 1937. It was established for the entire states. Anybody who wanted to participate from fire and police at the local level could vote into the system. The people of Marquette voted in 1965 to allow police and firefighters to have this pension fund, and which I'll say again, I'm very grateful for it. It is the pension board's responsibility to administer this fund, to make sure the investing is done right, to make sure that all our retired members are being reimbursed, and to make sure that our members who are working are paying into the system. Currently, we fund this pension partially by those of us who work for the city, for the police and fire departments, and then the rest paid for by the city of Marquette. Currently, the appointments are on the chairperson. I've been for a few years now. The secretary is a fire department member. Ken Lamar is not here tonight, but me and Ken are the union-elected representatives on behalf of our departments. We're joined by Tara Barman, and she's our city treasurer, staff liaison, who keeps Ken and I in line with numbers and things like that. One thing I want to note is that we have two vacancies. These vacancies are members at large, members from the community. We've been down one member almost since I came on the board, and now recently with the term expiring for G.G. Gordon, we're down two members. So again, if anybody has an idea of somebody that would like to have come on our board, a citizen at large, we would love to have another couple people on the board. Our board held ten meetings in the past fiscal year. We typically have our meetings every fourth Tuesday of the month. We've had no unexcused absences from our board members. The way it stands right now is we have, as far as current members that are paying into the system, we have thirty-five police and twenty-seven fire. Those who are retired, the police officers would rank forty-three, fire would be twenty-eight. In total, we have sixty-two people paying into the fund, and we have seventy-one drawing from it. Not counting the two deferred who have tenure but aren't collecting their pension yet. Currently, our funds are sitting just above $39 million. That's in our entire portfolio. As it stands right now, we're eighty-two percent funded. And I've always seen where we're hovering right around seventy-four, seventy-three, seventy-six percent funded. And to see eighty-two, despite the turmoil and turbulence in the market this past year is a pretty significant accomplishment by our money managers. We took on money managers Wells Fargo in 2013. We did a request for proposals to see if anybody could do better in the community in 2018 and decided to stick with Wells Fargo, and they've done a good job for us. We recently took on Principal Financial Services to supplement the job of Wells Fargo in cutting checks and paying checks to our members. One thing that we do for our collecting members is we have a thirteenth check. That's just a term to describe a thirteenth check that we cut to our members out of the year, despite the usual twelve, one per month. The thirteenth check kinda is a COLA, a cost of living adjustment, adjustment, because we don't we don't get a cost of living adjustment from this pension. What you make when you retire is what you're gonna make as many years on down the road as you live, so there's no COLA. The thirteenth check serves to finance our members who are, you know, on that fixed income. And this year, despite there was a loss in investment, we still cut a thirteenth check because we had the money to do it, and we know that some of the members on these fixed incomes were having a hard time with that fixed income. We voted as a board to extend that this year again. Another thing that we did is keep our members up to speed on what's going on with their investments. Every year, we put out a summary annual report. We just go through the things that drive our pension, the facts and figures and numbers, and how many people are contributing, how many people are drawing. We send out due diligence mailings to make sure that our members are keeping their information with the city up to speed so we know where to send checks to and keep track of people's family status. Another thing we did this year was to update the Act 88 portion of our policy. We are gonna establish an online portal for our members so that they can go online like we do for almost everything else. Put in your information, update your information, check on the status of your payments. It's the board's goals to do our fiduciary due diligence, keep the board funded and earning money positive, profitably. And we want to keep the pension around for not just me, but the young police officers and the young firefighters who are gonna be coming up and retiring in twenty-five, twenty-four years or so. We want to keep our current members who are collecting their pensions funded well, as well as can be also. So those are our board's goals. Some things that come up and have been coming up historically include those two vacancies that we still need to fill by the public at large. Again, we've had some vacancies on the board. We're still looking for people to fill those. Unfortunately, nobody has stepped up in a few years, so if anybody has an idea, we're open to take on some new members and appointments. Like I said before, eighty-two percent funded is a good number to have. It's a lot better than what we were at, which was still decent. Eighty-two is good, but it's not a hundred percent funded. Someday, we'd like to be there, if it's possible. We want to stay at eighty-two percent with our contributions and with our marketing and with our investments. So that's a goal, is to maintain eighty-two percent. We always deal with having more people that are collecting on the pension than are putting into it, and I don't foresee a solution to that problem, short of hiring a lot more people. But if anybody has any ideas, I'm always game. That concludes my presentation, and I'm open for any questions, if you have any.
Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you very much for coming in. That was a great presentation that really got it, and I'm very excited to see the eighty-two percent funded this year. My question's very simple. What time do you have your meetings on the fourth Tuesday of the month?
Fourth Tuesday of the month, typically, we have them at 8:30 in the morning.
Okay. I know that times of meetings sometimes make it harder or easier for certain people, but so I wanted, if I'm gonna put the word out, try and get them. I want to make sure I can tell them what time it's at.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Mike, thanks for coming up and giving us a really good, in-depth look at the fund. I think it's critical. We have a good understanding of it, and you certainly provided it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Otteway?
I just want to speak to the importance of this, and, you know, I know we have a lot of people at home watching. People keep coming up. Pension is really the one thing that is really a tool for hiring for police and fire. It's one huge key that we can offer as a city to the people that are looking to be hired to do these jobs, and it's a benefit that not everybody has. And I think it's a wonderful thing that it's watched, and you guys really, to get a eighty-two percent is a really good thing. And ultimately, even the state of Michigan's looking at pensions as an attractive option for things like corrections officers once again, and every entity is looking at it. So anything we can do to continue to, you know, rise that number up, I think it's gonna be great from a hiring standpoint. So I applaud you and everyone else on the pension board, and just want to make the importance of that just, you know, aware to the public. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate the presentation and just echo Commissioner Otteway here. It really is an important thing. And for hiring and recruiting, it's such a great tool that we have. I have a lot of law enforcement individuals in my National Guard unit, and I routinely remind them that they should come over here because we have this, and a lot of them don't anymore, so.
Send them. Please. All right.
Thank you. Moving on, that brings us to our public hearing, which is the Preliminary Planned Unit Development Plan for 480 River Park Circle. City Clerk, if you could give us the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 6th, 2023, the Planning Commission examined the application materials, preliminary site plans, staff file report and analysis, and held a public hearing for a preliminary planned unit development request for the property situated at 480 River Park Circle. After conducting the public hearing and their deliberations, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the request. It was moved by K. Clegg, seconded by A. Andres, and carried seven to one that after review of the PUD site plan and pattern book dated May 2023 and the staff file review and analysis for 01-PUD-05-22, the Planning Commission, who previously established that the PUD met five out of ten required objectives and the criteria to be eligible for a PUD of Section 54.323F of the Marquette City Land Development Code and the preliminary PUD plan meets Section 54.323H of the Marquette City Land Development Code, recommends that the PUD be approved by the Marquette City Commission with the following condition: that an amended plan is submitted to meet staff comments for the final site plan review. Yes votes from M. Rayner, S. Lowry, D. Fetter, N. Williams, K. Clegg, A. Andres, S. Middlefelt, and a no vote from W. Primo. Tonight's public hearing was scheduled during the commission's regular meeting of June 12th, 2023. Fiscal effect: When developed, it is likely there will be an increase in the taxable value of this property. Recommendation: Approve the planned unit development for 480 River Park Circle. Alternatives: As determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Members of the public wishing to speak specifically on this item have three minutes to do so. Please approach the center podium again if you'd like to give a comment on this item.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. It was a lazy Saturday afternoon, so I literally read everything in the agenda about this planned unit development. And I would like to come here and say I'm a hundred percent certain it should be approved, or I'm a hundred percent certain it should not be approved, and I'm not. There are a lot of pros to this. There's innovative thinking. There's a chance to do something that hasn't been done yet. There's land that could be developed. There is a potential for many great things to happen. I went through the Planning Commission meetings, and I'm reminded of how hard our staff worked to develop a land use code for new developments. And I counted, I think, four variances now and possibly two more in the future. That doesn't mean it shouldn't be approved. It just means, with all due respect, I've often disagreed with architect Barry Polson, but I've never had any problem understanding what architect Barry Polson was gonna build, where he was gonna build it, how big it was gonna be, how many parking spots it was gonna be, and even the lighting was all arranged. And if he's the gold standard for being able to answer the questions of the Planning Commission, I read this, and I've never had more difficulty, and this is my feedback to you, I've never had more difficulty in understanding what was being attempted here. That doesn't mean yes or no. It just means it's very fuzzy right now. And I don't understand how you can, I'm not a real estate person. I don't understand how you can get backing when that's fuzzy. And I also don't understand how you can develop productively with good ideas if you don't have a little bit of variance. So my input to you is it'd be a really good time to ask some more questions. And it'd be a really good time to ask just how many variances they think they're gonna need. And then, you know, make up your mind, because there isn't, it isn't a hundred percent right and isn't a hundred percent wrong. It's just very, very challenging to figure out what they're trying to do here. And I wish you the best of luck. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none?
Hello, everyone. Thank you, City Commissioners, City Staff. My name is David Olilla. I reside at 420 East Prospect Street in Marquette, Michigan, and I am the developer of Shop House Park. It's not fuzzy to me. It's new, and it's innovative, and oftentimes, those things are difficult to digest. Knowing that I have three minutes and I have plenty of information that I can draw from, what I'd like to do is read a little bit from my talking points that I presented to the Michigan Strategic Fund when they approved statewide funding for this project. I'd also like, before I start, to thank the city staff, especially the Community Planning Department. I'd like to thank Innovate, Marquette Smart Zone, and Invest U.P. for all showing an incredible amount of support over the last few years as we've tried to make this as little fuzzy as possible. In simplest form, we have a first-of-its-kind project responding to a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that puts Michigan in a leadership position that no other state can compete with. We have an emerging statewide effort to target the outdoor technology and mobility sectors. This is an opportunity for attraction, utilizing key assets from both peninsulas, an industry that is highly complementary to our mobility and technology investments throughout the state. Shop House Park is the potential nucleus of this effort and is a place-making development much like those in the lower peninsula, such as Central Station, American Center for Mobility, and M1 Concourse. The U.P. has this incredible asset of over eight million acres of forest land, connected by thousands of miles of trails, dirt roads, and routes that can serve as a resource for companies investing in research and development within the space. This is a statewide project, not just a Marquette project and not just a U.P. project. This is a statewide project that will garner national attention by connecting the upper and the lower peninsulas, our rural and our urban centers, and nearly $900 billion outdoor industry to our global mobility powerhouse. There's a large amount of letters of support that you should have in your packet that represent Fortune 50 companies, public and private entities from across the state of Michigan. And we're excited about that statewide support. Seeing I have 27 seconds here left, I'm gonna read something from the Henry Ford Museum. It's been some time, this is my words, it's been some time since the Ford Motor Company had a presence in the U.P. And here's what the Henry Ford Museum had to say. "The Upper Peninsula of Michigan meant business and pleasure alike to Henry Ford. Ford Motor Company operated sawmills and factories throughout the area that supplied lumber and finished parts to the Rouge. Mr. Ford and his wife Clara"
Sir.
"enjoyed summer vacations in the region and mild climate and natural beauty."
I'm gonna have to cut you off, but if during discussion of the commission has questions for you, we can certainly entertain privileged comment, okay?
That'd be great. Thanks.
All right, do we have any other comments during this public hearing? Anyone else for public comment? Once, three times. All right. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve the planned unit development for 480 River Park Circle.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse, the floor is yours.
Well, this has certainly been a project that's been going on, planning of it for some time. And it's been in the community, I think, widely. People have seen it. People have seen it, people have understood it, they've attended the meetings on it. I think there's a wide amount, a large amount of understanding within the city of Marquette as to what the project is. It certainly has also passed muster with the Planning Commission and city staff. I think that's critical. I think perhaps what makes it more important is that it's been able to garner the funding support from the state of Michigan to help make this a reality. And it also looks, looks very strongly to the future. And if we look at where are we going to be in 10 years, where are we going to be over that next mountain, this speaks loudly to that. And this is our opportunity, a opportunity for us, I think, to begin to work technology and really, let me look at this just a little differently. The great complaint in the Upper Peninsula has always been our kids because we export three things up here: wood, rocks, and kids. And the kids are looking for jobs, they're looking for the well-paying, high-tech jobs, and they're not finding them necessarily within the area of Marquette. This is an opportunity to find them here. This is an opportunity to really have a homegrown industry of product development, product application, of touching that next frontier. I support this very strongly, as is evident. But thank you for, Your Honor, for the opportunity to ramble.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Mayor Proton Davis?
There isn't a whole lot I can add to Commissioner Stonehouse, but this does give me an opportunity to mention how grateful I am that we have a Planning Commission and how grateful I am that the members of that Planning Commission have the knowledge and they take their role very seriously. And they ask the questions and have the discussion that's needed, also to the, the staff that, that help study this and work with it. You know, I don't know how many people read our full agenda, but if you do, you will see the very, very detailed Planning Commission minutes. And I like those because we can understand how detailed the commissioners go into studying this and they ask the questions and they talk about their concerns and they talk about their support. And I, I have to acknowledge that and agree with that. Now, this is a project that I'm really, it's visionary, it's innovative, and, you know, we'll just work through some of these processes as they, as they move forward. I'm very grateful for Mr. Olilla for bringing that to Marquette and especially since it's going to be a project not only for Marquette but for the UP and the state. I look forward to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Otway?
Yell at me if I'm wrong, but was, was there not a condition that was recommended on that motion? Okay, just making sure. Thank you. Okay.
Do we have additional? Commissioner Hanley, then Larson.
I just want to point out the fact that it's kind of getting brushed by is we are looking for tax base in this town and this is something that will increase the tax base once it's built. It will bring people here, it will bring jobs, and it will build up a part of the city that is not built up right now. It's, if nothing else, it's a wonderful thing just for that. But I do see the fact that not only have they given us the work through the Planning Commission, but you see what they've done towards these grants. They're not going to give a grant at the, in the amount that they are given without serious consideration to the project itself and what it's going to do. So I have a lot of faith in this and I'm very excited to see what comes from it.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
I was simply going to say that, you know, I'm very supportive of the project. Look forward to doing something that we haven't seen in Marquette in quite some time. And, you know, this is a kind of new idea, taking, taking, you know, an item of the moment to take the opportunity to move forward with something innovative and exciting that's placemaking for both Marquette, UP, and the state of Michigan. So I'm in full support.
Commissioner Smith?
I don't think I have anything new to add. I'm also excited to see. Thank you.
I would only add that I, I'm very excited that we're now at this point. I know it's been something you've been working on for quite some time now and this, this is truly a very unique opportunity for us to finally look at a more diversified economy for Marquette and more, and using the natural resources that we have and rely on for our tourist industry instead of making it more of innovation and outdoor recreational focus. And that's a huge opportunity for Marquette, the entire Upper Peninsula as an economic region, and the state of Michigan. And I'm, I'm very grateful for all the time you've put into this, as well for all the time that city staff and our planning commission did as well. So, thank you. Do we have anything else from the commission? All right. City Clerk, do I need a roll call for this?
I don't believe you do.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right. Moving on now, we have our consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Otway?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Well, that brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. Again, members of public wishing to give comment have three minutes to do so and please clearly state your name and fiscal address if you have not already done so. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Hello again. David Olilla, 420 East Prospect Street, Marquette. Thank you very much for your vote of confidence. Again, thank you to the Planning Department, Community Planning Department. They have put an incredible amount of work into this project and again, the stakeholders across the UP. So your vote of confidence will be echoed across the state. There are a number of people waiting to hear about the outcome from this and I look forward to working with the city commission, the city staff, Planning Commission to figure out all of the details and make sure that we build something here in Marquette that can make us all proud, will retain our youth, and create economic prosperity in a way that we've not pursued in the past. So thank you very much. I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. Friday, as I went to check the city website looking for the agenda for today's meeting, I saw the announcement that from now on, the island road would be shut to driving from 6:00 PM on Monday and Wednesday nights till close. I immediately went into, I don't understand, this is the first I've heard of it, and I check the city website regularly. As a result of communications in the last three days, it's come to my attention that there was a public service announcement, which I missed, changing the location of the Presque Isle Committee from one room to another and that the last sentence was "a discussion of walking hours will be made." I missed it. Had I not missed it, I would have been there. Not only would I have been there, a whole bunch of other people would have been there as well because any change you make to Presque Isle is going to attract the attention of the public. If you've been on Facebook in the last 36 hours, you've followed some interesting conversations. My perspective on the island is very personal. I was born and raised here. I have walked around the island as much as any person on this planet has walked around the island. Even in law school, when I was home for the summer, I walked from my parents' house all the way out and back every day, sometimes twice a day. So I have as much right as anybody to talk about walking the island as I do driving the island. Your committee surprised you, I know that, with this announcement. I know that there wasn't a discussion at the committee level that took in all points of view. I know that because I wasn't there. And I know that it was reported it was enthusiastically embraced by the members of the committee and it wouldn't have been enthusiastically embraced had I been there to point out that there's a balance. I got a great email from the city manager who explained the cost savings by keeping the island shut at night. You didn't have to have somebody run out and put the, take the barricade down and put it up again. I would submit to you, you could have the same amount of cost savings if you didn't put the barricade up at all, in which case people could still drive and the walkers could still have walked. But I don't believe that was even considered for a second. But of course, I don't know because I can't find the minutes for that meeting anywhere. And this goes to how your committees make decisions and how you know about them. There was no agenda published and there's no maintenance published. And if they're published, I can't find them. And I take great pride in finding stuff. The island is not a recreational area. It is a non-denominational holy place for everyone who has set foot on it. And I don't care what your background is, where your, your people have come from, where you got there. I don't know anybody who considers the island just another park. And to make a decision like this unilaterally, technically following the rules, I guess, but making it impossible for people to know what's going on, your committee did not serve you well. And one more thing, I know I'm over, but one more thing.
Ms. Brum, I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to cut you off.
Then you'll hear it on Facebook. Thank you very much.
That's, that's totally fine. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. This brings us to comments from the commission and I believe Commissioner Hanley, you're up.
I don't have much for comments. I want to thank the Kiwanis for an amazing Fourth of July parade. I wasn't here, but my staff that was in it thought it was wonderful and everyone had a great time all around. I also heard wonderful things about the laser light show type, or, and fireworks together that, that symphony. So I'm very excited to maybe one day spend Fourth of July in Marquette. Other than that, we have a long time before our next meeting and I do believe Blueberry Fest comes in before that. So I want to remember, remind everyone to take part in that wonderful Friday afternoon at the end of the month. It's always a good time on downtown Washington Street. And one more thing, I did attend my first Wednesday farmer's market and it was wonderful. The street was bustling, everything was going crazy. I think I really enjoy the fact that that's up there on Washington Street now. And if you haven't attended, I encourage you to go. It is a wonderful experience and very vibrant.
Commissioner Larson?
Not too much. Just made it through the holiday, holiday week here, you know, last week. It was a good, good turnout by everybody for the parade and fireworks and then, but one other thing that I wanted to say is that we also had a ribbon cutting with, you know, John Swenson for the new, for the new piers, you know, downtown. And so many thanks to all the work that, you know, staff has done and previous, previous, you know, commissions have done to help set that up. But it was well attended and looking forward to more events over on the piers.
Commissioner Otway?
I'll keep it short. I just wanted to make comment on the, just the community effort of our police during the Fourth. I saw numerous Viking police officers. I saw them interacting with the public. Just the idea of community policing, I think, is something that's well-taken in this community. And really, I can't thank those that are involved in that enough because I think it really opens light up to people and, and really embraces the police department. So thank you to all those involved and thank you to those guys for just making themselves out there and being part of the public.
Mayor Proton Davis?
Well, since Commissioner Larson brought up the pier ribbon-cutting ceremony, I just want to thank this, well, and I suppose it was John Swenson who got the city band there, but it was so nice to see the city band at that ribbon cutting. It just made everything so much more celebratory. So thank you for that. On the other hand, some of us are finding it a lot easier to drive around Marquette because of some of the street improvements we've had. Fourth Street looks great, it's nice and smooth, some parts of Lake Shore Boulevard. Those of us who drive around South Marquette are really appreciative of some of the improvements on Altamont and of course, division, yay! So thank you for the staff for making those improvements and for the administrative staff that found the funds to do that.
Commissioner Smith?
I really have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a couple of quick hits. Boy, if you want to create some controversy, change the walking hours or the driving hours at Presque Isle and watch the earth begin to crumble. And certainly, that, that really is very indicative of how much we love the island, whatever our perspective may be on it, whatever our use factor may be. It is certainly a very precious part of the city of Marquette and I think all of us. I would point out, and thank you, Commissioner Larson, for talking about the piers. I can remember 25 years ago, being in a meeting when we were looking at what are we going to do with the pilings? So that process has been 25 years in the making, much of it with state money and state resources and DNR, DEQ, and as they change their name and become different alphabet organizations. But it does take tenacity to hold to something to get it accomplished. And the city of Marquette, varying commissions over 25 years, kept their nose on it and eventually had the right opportunity to make the project work for the city. Thank you for your time.
I don't think I have anything to add after what's already been said. I would maybe appreciate a little bit of a follow-up clarification from the city manager regarding the island. Just, I, I think you had a very well-explained explanation that I know you've sent out to some members of the public that have emailed us, even a summarized version of that I think would be just good to have out there. But other than that, good meeting, everyone. Kick it over to you, city manager.
Thank you. So just to clarify a few things, alluding to the, the explanation that we had, is the fact that there are some, some challenges with part-time staff and, and having a consistent level of service to close the, the, the walking loop or the driving loop for Presque Isle. And again, I want to make this clear that it's not really a budget issue, it is more of a staffing issue. And I think that all of our businesses downtown have, have somewhat expressed some of the same frustrations in making sure that they have consistent staffing, but also enough staffing each day. And so the changes that were made was extending the summer walking hours on Monday and Wednesday evenings from six to eight PM to six to close. And I understand that this comes with some great uncertainty and some, some challenges for others, but it is one that has been an issue since I have been here. The number of emails, and I'm not going to say very polite emails either, emails for having the park not either opened or closed too late, even five minutes late. So it is something that we were very hesitant to do, but took a, a long time to really explore all those options, including utilizing our own police department or police officers to, to help with those two days out of the week. So the one thing that I have learned since I have been here is not only to, to not mess with the walking hours or the driving hours, but it's also how resilient our community is to change. And once we get over some of these more challenging things, we learn and we adapt. And that is something that is really evident with this community and I do have a lot of confidence that we will be able to get through this, this change. And we will also really explore how we better communicate some of these changes and really be able to have enough notification to all in order to, to allow for people to plan and then adjust as well. So I hope that kind of covered it for everybody. By the way, we have some really wonderful part-timers, but they take their jobs very seriously because their jobs cover not only closing the park, but also making sure they maintain all the bathrooms, the trash cans, and all the other things that we really enjoy in all of our parks. And that's a lot for some people to, to do. And sometimes those other tasks take longer and they can't get to the park on time to close it or to open it. So this is something that we had to take very seriously. So again, you guys are all resilient. You'll bounce back, I know it, but we'll, we'll continue to work on this, I assure you. One more other announcement, can I? I do want to give kudos to our police department, fire department, and public works employees that, that celebrated Fourth of July with us instead of going out to their own camps or enjoying things, but they were here to make sure that everything was safe, clean, and enjoyable for all. So kudos to all those staff members and also community services that had to have few special events this past week too. So major kudos to all the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:44 PM.